That was a different person. I have to be silent.
That's your last name?
What was that?
All right, people, you ready? She hasn't got it written down.
Are you ready to get your thing out?
Oh, is she?
Can you get your thing ready? So, the same. Call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Charles Randy Steve.
Sean Harley.
George Knoll.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Maloney.
Show Andrew Zendez. And Erica Hart and Gunn. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of 24, 20, 21, regular session. Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, and carry. Citizens input. Any citizens have anything tonight?
I'm not sure if that's where I stand in or not, but I have a parking ticket I'd like to dispute.
Okay. And would you state your name, please?
Chris Heat.
All right, Chris, I guess our officers that are here, where was the parking ticket at? I mean, did you not get the parking ticket? Were you in the no parking zone? I don't understand for disputing it.
Well, the, according to the January 27th meeting from this meeting, a parking violation is $30, and the, the fine was $50 on the, the ticket.
So, that's all you're disputing is the cost of the ticket? Not that you didn't deserve a parking ticket? As far as that's, I guess that's my question. If the meeting says, if it says the parking ticket is $30, what's our ordinance say? Or what's our fine say? Does it say $30? Okay.
Bye.
There's a discrepancy. I would honor the 2019 ordinance.
What?
Our computers, he wrote off the computer, and it was set down state. It says $50 on.
There's no way to change that, the fee in our computers? It's already preset, so.
We had to call down state and send stuff. And Travis was doing that for us.
Okay.
He was our liaison for that. But, no longer with us.
Okay. So, if that's already disputing is the price of the ticket? The $50 versus the $30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to reduce the fine on the ticket for, what's your last name, sir?
Heat.
Mr. Heat. The 2021 ordinance of $30. Versus the one that was written on, based on the old one. There is a typo in that ordinance that I need to rewrite.
And a motion is second to go ahead and drop the fine to $30 from $50. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. There you go. Those payments, wasn't it?
Well. 60% less payments.
Thank you.
Can I pay that now, or do I need to, do I need to come back?
I don't know what you guys do. I don't get involved in, normally the police matters.
We don't take the money.
We don't take the money here?
Clerk's office.
Clerk's office, okay.
Yeah, I don't know that right now we're gonna, that's gonna be able to issue a receipt. Probably come back in those hours.
Yeah. I'd have to restart all the computers and everything. I mean, to give you a receipt.
Can you just mail me a receipt? If I, I mean, I live 35 minutes away.
Could he mail it in? Could he mail it in?
Yeah.
Oh, I can, yeah, I can mail it in on the, on the thing. Yeah, 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 yeah.
You still have to go give me cash. Come here.
There's white receipts in the top drawer.
Officer Mark.
Any other citizens input?
$50.
Not? Full business attorney report.
Got a lot of updates, not a whole lot of business. Well, depending on what I said. First thing, our Speedway gas station property is gonna be, it's scheduled to close on the 27th, which is a week from this coming Friday. Paul's been helpful in getting documentation back that I've sent to him. So, everything's on the go, and looking positive for that. The Claudel property, if you remember at the last meeting, I think it was, we have authorized an extension on that until November 1. That's been signed by everybody. That has also been recorded, so we're, we're good to go. We'll calendar that to November 1, see where things are at there. The Spiegel property, again, another one of those properties in poor condition. There was basically the, the vote of the council to say we would accept a deed in exchange for just dismissing the, the suit that we have filed in certain court in Marshall County. We have the deed, we have the signed settlement agreement. I don't have the deed back from the recorder's office yet, but it did get presented today. Don't expect any problems or issues, but just saying that's moving forward as well. So, we have another property with Mr. Moore at 326 West Church Street. That was a property that we let up for bids to have contractors come in and do the work. And deadline to submit bids, attorney bid then was Monday. We have no bids. And this is, I'm gonna say, a not uncommon occurrence. That's been a situation with the county, too. My recommendation is to let this out for bid again. But maybe touch base with a couple contractors that we've known to do work with this type in the past and say, hey, there's a bid. If you're interested, please submit your bid, and I'll just set up the timeframe again to, to run this process through. But, so we don't have any bids to open. There's nothing more to do other than just get your permission and authorization to go ahead and submit another request for bids.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Derek, submit another request for bids for the Church Street property. If you can think up.
The motion is second to have bids open again, to clean up more property on Church Street. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion, carry.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Considering an issuance of a building permit for all family farms, we've had an executive session earlier this evening. It's my understanding that there may be a sentiment to basically, to not accept a counterproposal in terms of a way to resolve issues, but we need to vote on that to say that we would not accept a proposal to resolve that matter.
Make a motion to reject counterproposal from said parties.
Second. There's a motion, a second to reject the counteroffer on the.
Off property.
Off family farms. Off family farms property. Any other discussion?
Off property development.
Off property development. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion, carry.
The, the last thing I have is basically a zoning ordinance, guys. Been a lot of people, spent a lot of time putting that thing together. I didn't even bring it with me tonight.
He's got, he got it with me.
Here.
There you go. Where we are at with that is that, again, it's been several months in the making. It originated in the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission had a public hearing and a public meeting on Monday evening, and they prepared a resolution that has been signed and forwarded to the council. It's 2021-03 from the Plan Commission. It says they're giving that a favorable recommendation. I prepared an ordinance that would accept and adopt the new zoning ordinance. It basically, it's, it's a more or less a wholesale repeal of our current land use and development code. This will not take effect until we have notice published, and then it's 14 days after that. So, any applications, any petitions that come forward until that point in time are still gonna act under the Land Use and Development Code, assuming this passage is this evening. But, we are prepared to move this forward. I think it's also important that, for the record, that we note that when this has been considered, the council's paid reasonable regard to the comprehensive plan of the town, the current conditions and character of the current structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and responsible growth and development. Again, it's in the ordinance, but again, that's kind of the standard. That's what you need to consider when you think about adopting this new zoning ordinance.
Well, as a member of the Plan Commission, very nice to recommend to the council. President, pass the ordinance.
I've reviewed it, not word for word, but I've browsed it pretty considerably. I would make a motion to pass ordinance 2021-12, an ordinance to repeal and amend text of the Town and Local Ordinance, Land Use and Development Code, and zoning ordinance on, and waive the rules and pass on all three readings.
Second. There's a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2021-12 on all three readings. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion, carry.
Who's willing to sign out of this?
Is that one double signed? No, thank goodness.
I need that just for you.
I don't have anything more to report.
Make a motion to pass attorney report.
Second.
Motion is second to pass attorney report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion, carry. Next up, downtown square bid award.
You still got to talk, don't you? You got to talk.
Yeah, anything about this?
You get the, the recommendation from Troyer. Out of those five bids, if you remember, I think you've all seen the amount. So, part of the few that's, that's paid to Troyer is they go through and look through all those contractors to make sure they all met the bid specifications, and that everybody is correct. So, it's Troyer's recommendation to you that you award the bid tonight to Indiana Earth Incorporated. Their base bid amount was $998,418.
Maloney, there's a contract in there.
I stopped it right there. I think that, for $92,000, that's one. Oh, did you get it? Okay, yeah, she'll have something different.
I don't know if you wanna have Derek look at Okra before you sign it, or get permission for George to sign it.
So, virtually what this, we had to wait to do this until we got the, the release of funds from Okra for the grant, which Shannon got that this week. There'll actually be a meeting on the 24th during the day. They call it a pre-construction meeting. That contract you've had, actually, he sent that to them also for them to review, so I'm sure Derek will need to review it before we do anything. But virtually all you're doing tonight is just awarding the actual bid to Indiana Earth, that they were the lowest bidder, and they were an acceptable bidder.
Subject to the terms of the contract. Subject to review of the terms of the contract. Because I had, I had some questions on the alternates, you know, the DDoPs, the ordinance add-ons, and that kind of stuff. Who makes that? Who's gonna make that call?
When we do that? Yeah, we'll get into that after. We'll sit down and go over all that.
The board will.
Yeah, that's why we awarded this at the base bid. We didn't take anything off, didn't. Yes, from now on, you five will make those decisions, not the committee that came up with some of those initial facts. So, you'll have to approve any change orders, anything we change now on.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote, provided it passes attorney review of the contract for Indiana Earth Incorporated for $998,418 for the downtown square project.
Second. There's a motion, a second to award the bids to Indiana Earth for the downtown square upon our attorney reviewing the contract. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion, carry. Anyone have any new business, or any other old business?
I have one thing. As some of you know, I've been kind of working with Mark and Erica behind the scenes. About a month ago, or a month and a half ago, we all had an exec meeting up here, and we were discussing the employee handbook and benefits, and the way things are tabulated, and everything else. We've been working on this since then. Actually, we've done quite a bit of work on it. And we got to kind of a rough draft now to where I would ask the board for approval to put a subcommittee together consisting of three council members to try to refine this a little bit, along with Mark Vanderwheel. And I would also like permission to ask to call Lori, what's her last name?
Myers.
Myers in, as she has extensive background in HR issues. And she may qualify for overtime, for them hours, if we call her in for that.
It needs to be two council. Not three council, two. You can't have three in a row together.
Not in an official exec published?
That's not.
It does not an exec reason yet. So, I would make two council for the subcommittee, and then bring it to a workshop or.
Okay. So, I guess I would like permission to go forward with that, to try to refine that along those guidelines, minus one council member.
Let's, let's it forward to go through the handbook call.
To. Remember, we have issues with hours across the departments, the way they're awarded, the way the HR laws are. And that has to be revised. And then just looking at benefits in general, holidays, how they're paid versus departments and across there. It's pretty comprehensive what we've worked on so far. We get it to a place where it looks pretty decent. But purposely just kept this with a small group of people right now, just working on it in the background. So, like, get a working draft, something we can work from. Because when we add fire territory to it, that puts the hours, because there's shift differences. We have, we have one department works eight-hour shifts. We have a department works 12-hour shifts. We have a department works 24-hour shifts. And the way that the vacation days are ordered across those, it makes it way out of balance when you look at it from a percentage standpoint, and that is an HR violation.
But you may be looking at all employees.
All employees.
Oh, no, all employee benefit.
Yes. They're working, yeah, everything.
Quite a suggestion. Quite a good one. He's not gonna like it, but I think he'll do it.
Randy?
Well, because he sits on the fire territory board, and that's a third of that. We're gonna have to get their approval on that side of it just as much as we're gonna have to get the council for the other two.
So, what are you saying?
I just wanted to review it. You should sit on the committee. Yeah, this committee. All we're doing is virtually what Sean, Erica have just been emailing back and forth, throwing ideas out there.
You can't have to.
No, I know. So, Sean, Randy, myself, and Lori.
So, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, then, or she can sit at the meeting?
Erica?
The council meeting.
Oh.
I would say invite Randy, because we don't fire territory.
Right, yeah, I agree with that. So, do we need to make a motion on that?
If that's what you're trying to do, I think you made a motion to set that committee up.
I am asking for board approval, so I, again, I don't wanna make the motion for it.
So, I'll make a motion that we allow a committee to be set up to continue reviewing the employee benefits. And the committee consists of myself, Sean Harley, and then we'll have Lori Myers in here as HR.
And Mark Vanderwheel.
And Mark Vanderwheel. Anything else, George? No? You're gonna go over the all benefits as long as this, for everybody?
Yes. That's one of my main things is, is I, it has to be, and I told Mark, it has to be fair. I mean.
Right, okay. Where's your motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? If not, we'll move on to department head reports, police department.
All I have, you have my report. One thing I have, one thing, is the police commission approved or gave a conditional offer to a young man named Gary Sprat from Silver Lake. He's a new officer, he's a graduate from Purdue. And it was on condition that he pass his polygraph and the perf, and he's already had his polygraph and pass a flying color, so we're waiting on a date for Perf to send it down to Andy.
I'd also like to add that, since I sit on the police commission, it's the first time in all the times that we've taken applications for officers that you've basically had one applicant, and that's it. First time, and I don't know, I've been on the commission for probably 15 or 16 years.
But the one applicant isn't very good.
He's a very good applicant, yes. We were very fortunate that we got that one, so.
Yes.
Does that bring us back up to five then?
Well, right now, it gives six. It's retired, right. Depending on, you know.
And then there's still the pending retirement. I'm not gonna get a name. There's pending retirement.
Yeah, I know, it's all that, so. Any questions for Cory? Not utilities, Jamie?
Hi, you have my report. Woodland Trail lift station is complete. Remember, we moved that over to the pond. Submitted the community crossings paving for 2022, so we should get the results on that, and whether we get awarded. I think it's in mid-September, so we'll be finding that for next year. Storm superclass behind the Quonset Hug, we're still looking into that. We had a camera crew come in today. We TV'd what we could, but the line was in such bad shape, couldn't get in most of it, so. County, it's personally county title, then ours, so I'm working with the county to figure out what they're gonna do with theirs, and we'll have to fix ours and do some upgrades, so. Then, the other thing I have, I put in for that water and sewer rate study a while back. That's done, so we need to come up with a date for Eric to come in and kind of explain that. So, we could do September 1st, we could do the 15th. Probably should look at a workshop. I think it's gonna take a little while.
We have a workshop like the second.
Yeah.
Of, the second meeting in September, we have a workshop scheduled.
So, we could do that for the 15th then.
As far as the applicants, I think George had something else.
No, I was looking in the calendar. Yeah, he told me about it.
So, it'd be the second.
It'd have to be the second one, yeah. Good. 22nd.
What's that?
22nd. September, and then it'd be the 15th.
It's on the 15th.
No, 15th, I'm sorry, it's the first. See what happens, it's your wedding anniversary, you forget those dates.
Yeah, I've done that before. It's not a good idea.
Well, I'll find out if that works for them. I'll get it set up at least, so. That's all I have. Again, we're busy, still working out a poker park, trying to get that landscape, concrete's all done, but we're trying to get grass seed down there, so we're getting dirt in there and everything else. Got just a couple more pads to pour, but I'm gonna try to get everything like landscape, then we can get out and get those last couple benches. So, we're waiting on the benches anyway, so there's no hurry.
Looks really nice coming.
I'd like to congratulate, I mean, I was out to park just the other night, and I noticed the lift station was done. It looks, it looks nice. You guys done a nice job out there. It's all backfilled nice, and it blends in well. So, I thought, it looked better than I thought it would look.
So, the big thing left is the pavilion? There's a little work there yet with the pavilion, or?
No, it's all, it should be all done.
Then what about the, and this may be a source of the bridge? You're gonna replace the pavilion?
We can't do anything with that.
You can't touch it?
Not right now.
Meaning, I don't know, that was something they wanted to do, but we don't really need to. Okay, I'm fine with it, too.
Not right now.
It don't bother me. I don't go across it.
In other words, he's telling you they got something else in your mind.
Oh. We're gonna have a summary.
All right, any other questions for Jamie? If not, fire report.
Check my report there. Another half, and I was, the 28th of August here. We're gonna have a fun day. Fire department's ahead again with the kids' day. Tours, fire truck tours. Pools, gonna be swimming, water slides, cotton candy, just everything for kids and the community. Give back to the community one more time, and what it's all about is.
Words of that?
Be right here, in front of the station. Town, grass, right up front. Give it back to the kids.
Sounds good. You got Aaron's report in your packet, everybody?
He's on a call.
So, they've done 111 runs so far this year? And that's above normal?
Yeah. For this time of year.
Yeah. People aren't afraid to go to the hospital and die in a coma, they give you that, so let it call in.
Well, it's what they didn't do.
This month has been a little slow, but we ran 10, 15 a month, so. Yeah, our numbers are.
Looks good, though. You guys have done a great job. Okay, Mark, economic. We've got all yours, too. Anything else you want to say?
A couple things. The Elevate group, I was supposed to bring up, they're gonna have a 9/11 ceremony, on 9/11 this year. It goes on that day, on Saturday, Memorial Park at 6:00 PM. Can't tell you much more than that. I haven't quite been involved in that one. With on the stage speaker, fire department's involved. But that is gonna be a memorial park on September 11. The only other thing that I know we need to do, The only other thing that I know we need to do, Jamie got the last piece for a puzzle for our subdivision. He and I are gonna sit down and work on some figures. And somehow, we're gonna have to get to you to sit down with you guys on, just so everybody's clear what's where, how this is going. So we're just ahead of. That's really all that I have, besides what's in our board.
Any questions for Mark? I just don't know how to work here, that's probably.